Discussion.
Yes, so yeah, thank you Chair. Again, apologize for that, there were, I received notice from two commission members that they wouldn't be in attendance after the meeting agenda had been posted. We do have, just on our agenda as was planned, the only, the items were purely discussion only. They are for the development application that we received from Tract through their consultants and the current landowners. An item for a zoning ordinance amendment request, that is a permit. And so it was an application that was formally made with a fee planned and then a development concept that we've been talking about that had some decision impacts from the past that we just wanted to go through and verify, you know, what had happened in the past, what was still valid, what isn't valid, and then how to, you know, proceed moving forward. So we do have representatives from, from those three here, so at this point, you know, we could have a conversation, certainly ask some questions. I do, I do want to state that for the items related to Tract and the development application that they have, that is going to be a big part of the conversation at the joint city council planning work session on June 17th at 5:00 PM here as well. So they will have full representation there for, to be able to answer, answer questions. But if we do have stuff like now or in advance, let us know related to that and we can make sure that those questions get reported back to them so that they have an opportunity to discuss them for the public in that, in that setting as well. So, you know, it's unfortunate that we don't have the quorum to move through for business purposes, but ultimately if we can do that at a, at a future planning commission date, so we'll just get the minutes and other, other business attended to. Thankfully, we didn't have anything that was pending for a public hearing or actual ordinance or resolution to approve tonight.
Do we have to do public input then too?
There wasn't, and I just picked up the sheet and nobody had signed up.
And is, if we're having a discussion, I'm assuming it's all right to do it back and forth with people?
Just for, I think logistics with the meeting, because it is still broadcast, if they could approach the podium, at least pick that up and, and so those watching can hear.
Thank you. Then we will go to item 7A, gravel driveway ordinance amendment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on that or?
Yeah, so I do believe Mark Sansgaard and, sorry, I forgot your first name, Andrew, are here to speak on that, they're part of the Timber Ridge development. This primarily came up, we did hear from Mark back in January discussing this regarding the estate lots. At the time, we're looking at that in terms of a variance and, you know, at that moment we directed them or agreed that we'd move forward in a different path to explore an ordinance update. So Mark and I met back in May to discuss this. I've, you know, done a fair amount of research regarding the subject and, you know, how, you know, it could apply. And so they, they did make a formal application to amend the ordinance, so that's what's in the packet that you received. There is a need to, at some point, take action to this before a 60-day deadline or file for an extension. I, I had a conversation with Mark regarding that, I do believe we will need to extend that just to, to meet that deadline, but, you know, we could discuss, move this on based on the discussion or if there's any other input in amending that amendment or discussing, you know, the direction that we do want to go, if there is any changes that we want to make to that ordinance, that part of the ordinance. So just as a background and history, the, the need for that is those estate lots that are approved have some unique characteristics certainly within the city that we have right now. They're platted, so for some very large lots, they do both, I think, have shared driveways and that was kind of necessitated from the county and the road access off of Highway 20, County Highway 24. They're very long driveways as needed to, to reach the properties. Additionally, that, that area town isn't served by water and sewer and nor is it in the immediate near future, even long-range plans at this point to, to bring water and sewer to that area. So there was a variance or agreement put in place with that development that they could develop their own well in septic up until the point in which the city brought in the central water and sewer and at which time they would have to connect. But the driveways weren't, weren't discussed or approved at that time. So in terms of what we're, you know, asking for at this moment was just a conversation to see, gather input from the planning commission members over what direction they wanted to go. I did share in there a sample ordinance that I thought if, if we were looking for something more defined than what was submitted in the application, it, it felt the one that I had, example from Spearfish, South Dakota, was a similar, kind of little more similar and put a little bit more specifics around distance and, and justification for allowing for gravel driveways.
Thank you, John.
So I guess what I want to ask is, I'm looking at the different choices we have, and were you thinking to have, I think you can have like 20 to 25 feet asphalt up to the gravel driveway before you get in, is that what you're thinking of doing or you think of just having gravel straight to the highway to get into your estates?
Yeah, oh, they got it.
There's a button on the microphone too.
There we go, alright, good. Good evening Chair, Council, or Planning Commission members. Again, my name is Mark Sansgaard with GMH Land, I'm representing Timber Ridge tonight. I was here over winter, a few months ago, we were looking for a variance for gravel driveways and as we got deeper into it, we were looking at the city ordinance and the city ordinance basically has one option for a driveway in, down here in Cannon Falls and that's to have a paved hard surface driveway. So after discussing it with staff a little bit further, we thought, well, maybe it'd be better to take a good look at the city ordinance and maybe there's a chance to make some revisions for that for some unique lots in the city of Cannon Falls. We also, in our research, kind of looked around the city and there are, there are a reasonable number of driveways in the city that are not a paved surface right now. So in particular for the estate lots at Timber Ridge, our idea for something that we thought would be reasonable would be to have the driveway portion of each lot, the first 25 or 30 feet from the actual garage out be paved so that when you pull up to your garage, you're parking on a hard surface, or when you pour into your garage, you're parking on a hard surface. Then the other end of it was as you come off the county road or a city road while you're in the, the right of way of whether it be a city street or a county road, that portion is also paved so that you don't have gravel or runoff stuff going on to a public street. So then we, the thought was then between the right of way and then up towards when you get close to the, the actual home itself, that portion of your driveway could be gravel.
How many feet are we talking?
Boy, I, I mean, the southern one, you know, we're talking, I didn't bring a scale with me, but, you know, 500, 600 feet.
Let me ask a question. Would this be something that, I mean, we already have the exemption for water and sewer because of the long distance. I'm, I'm thinking way into the future when we've got houses all along 24 out there. And then, you know, the dust from that driveway might actually interfere with other people living in that area. Would this be something we could do this until city water and sewer are out there and then have it paved at that time or is it going to be impossible forever?
It's, it's an option. The other thing we talked with staff about is that maybe some more land along these county roads might come into the city and then you'll have more situations like this where, you know, there are existing homes or something or new developments or new lots that are larger lots that could also use this part of the code to not do a full driveway or driveway or homes that are already out there and water and sewer are now showing up and then the city would require them to be hooked up and then would the, would the city also then require them to be a paved driveway too on top of the hookup? So I think this was more of a idea for an option for not to put too much burden on new homeowners or existing homeowners that already are out there and have a long gravel driveway but now are in a situation where they can hook up to water, city water and sewer because those are going to be rather large bills and then to say, oh, by the way, you know, good news, we brought you city water, city sewer and here's the cost for that, but also city ordinance requires you now to pave your, your driveway. And this would be an option for the city to say you don't necessarily have to pave your full driveway. Is that about what we talked about, John?
Yeah, I think so. You know, in terms of, certainly have some potentials for future, future properties that are coming in where it's going to be burdensome if, if indeed they, you know, were forced to pave their driveway as they're annexed into the city or connecting up to, to water and sewer. So even in the existing more in-town, some, there were some that, you know, had some pretty significant links to their, to their driveways already, more than just, you know, people with the, coming off the alley and had their back approached to their back garage or even coming off a street where it's just a, you know, more standard 25-foot frontage driveway to your, to your garage door. There are some that are in that, you know, 50-plus, 100, I mean, one even around 250, 250 feet in town where it's been there for probably, you know, a century. But it's, so, you know, I, I think to me, you know, justification for why we're doing it certainly is around the stormwater and protecting that from runoff and gravel getting into those surfaces. The parking on paved surfaces, I think, can be definitely an issue. If you don't have that, you know, if they're parking on just grass surfaces, then you get the, the, you know, struggles of, of grass and other things growing up around there where you have cars parked if they're parked for a very long time. So I do see like your recommendation of, you know, the start and the end certainly address two of those issues. The dust and things, you know, certainly would have a, a problem or a challenge to, over time, as if you do have longer runs and they are, you know, close to, in close proximity to neighboring houses, you are going to see that impact other residents too. So we do need to be mindful of how these decisions can impact others, but there are definitely, I, I feel that as a recommendation, I think there's, there is a need to change the ordinance, just in regards to what the future holds as well as some of the existing areas that we have in town. But finding that balance, I think, is useful.
What would be like a, they're in their thing to have the rural or large lot, single family. What would be the definition of a large lot? Because I was saying if it was large enough, the driveway hopefully would be in the center and therefore the problem of dust mitigation to other property owners might be more, I know these two, these four homes are kind of in a wooded area, so.
Right.
But that doesn't necessarily mean the next one down the road, you know, is going to have the, in the middle of the woods, that kind of soaks up some of the dust.
Yeah.
And I understand, you know, the, the stormwater and all of this reasoning, I just grew up breathing gravel dust and it was not fun.
So I know for, certainly for the urban reserve, that would absolutely be the case, but I think the standard for minimum lot size in urban reserve is like 10 acres, so it, it's not going to apply to very much, very many places. Yeah, we, I mean, you could define it, there's the RE. I mean, we have RE, R1, R2, 3, up to 4, but the higher number you get into the, more density, so you're probably getting into the closer ones where you don't have any sort of long driveway runs at all. Certainly RE is, would probably very much mimic that, that, the example, one from Spearfish, which I, what you're referencing for rural, large lot residential, I think is what it's called. That seems to be one that aligns with it pretty well.
How big are these lots at approximate?
So this one's two and a half acres, this one's 3.2, this one's 2.25 and this one's 2.15.
So they're all?
They're all 2+.
They're all 2+, okay. So that if we were going to try to craft this ordinance, we could start by saying a minimum at least two acres on a lot size?
Yeah, RE minimums are, it's about a half an acre. So there might be, that doesn't necessarily align, but we certainly could set an acreage threshold in terms of that if you didn't want to set a zoning, you know, make it an accessible option in, in different zones.
I have a question that's been, I came out, I visited, went to your states. I'm just trying to figure this out. This is the driveway, is that correct? It's coming into that particular?
Yes.
The boundary? I'm trying to figure out, if this is a person's lot, why would you want to have a shared driveway coming across the spot? Why could you not just bring the driveway right on the lot line?
Okay.
I'm just asking that to see who's first and then who's last.
No, that's a good, good question because we had, we proposed the exact same thing to the county. County required those driveways to be across from each other.
Seriously?
Yeah.
I'm going to add one item, typically the county is going to only let you have one driveway, they're going to encourage a shared driveway.
Oh, okay.
So they, they want to limit the number of driveways onto the road.
Well, if you, if you moved that one drive, does it have to be across from each? No?
They wanted them across from each other.
Okay.
So if you move the other one, now you're, you're trained, you can't get there.
Yeah, you're basically doing the same.
We, we played around with several lots configurations and.
Yeah, I think you explained that to me, you know, back in the winter, that you spent a lot of time with the county in assessing the, the final locations for these shared, the, the shared driveways.
I mean, our, our deal buyer for the south is, you know, mom and dad are building a house and their neighbor's going to be their kid or, you know, a family compound where two homes with one driveway, something like that. And that's kind of been the interest in that lot so far too. But we do have shared driveway documents ready to go if we were to write a purchase agreement about maintenance and management and stuff like that. Not to bring up another scenario, but I will. And I apologize, I didn't bring the Timber Ridge Estates overall site plan, but as we move into the next phase, we had those larger lots where we had placed larger accessory buildings for the rear of the lot to be served by a gravel alleyway. And that's the way we presented it, so, and I guess that final plat will be coming in front of you over the next, sometime in the next year. So we will be requesting that alleyway as presented at the preliminary plat to stay gravel.
Is that another one of those ordinance things?
That, in our conversations, that was, I think the direction there was that was going to be a private alleyway, not a public alleyway. So they were going to have some level, when the preliminary plats for that, that was part of the discussion at that time. So they keep that alleyway private and then they, that would allow for it to be gravel.
But just, as we talk about these things, you know, they're new and it's a little different and sometimes the ordinance and the rules don't exactly fit, but we'll be clear with our application.
So if we were going to put this together in legalese, whatever official language, to apply not only here but going forward, you know, we could make a minimum lot size of whatever we think is appropriate. And there again, I, I'm not just stormwater, I really do think dust flowing from gravel driveways is not pleasant to live next to, so, you know, I think two acres sounds good, but can't, and then we're looking at like 25 feet out from the garage and 25 feet out from the access road?
It'll vary depending upon the width of the right of way.
Okay.
So it would be to the right of way line, so in this case where the county road is wider, so it would be wider than that. In this case, I think it's closer to, help me out, Mark, I thought it was closer to 70 feet.
Yeah, it's, it's quite a bit.
It's, so they would pave like 70 feet away.
Or maybe it's a, maybe it is a distance of at least 25 feet off of right of way and then at least 25 feet in front of the home.
Yeah.
Or 25 feet off of a road and then 25 feet in front of a home.
And then do we want to say that this is only going to apply, maybe if they've got a 75-foot driveway, it seems kind of silly not to pave the last 25, so we're going to say it has to be at least 100-foot or 200-foot long driveway or what would be reasonable, do you think, or?
Yeah, we, we could come up with something that's reasonable.
That's kind of what we'd have to have, right?
Yeah, sounds like it.
25 in, in the front, 25 in the back and at least 50 in the middle where they could request for that to not be paved.
Like that?
Alright. No, we appreciate the conversation.
Well, thank you. Any other comments?
Nope.
Moving on to, well, just saying, I'm on the wrong agenda now. B, initial application, tract development.
So we do have tonight Jake Seen, he's with Larkin Hoffman and Representative of Tract. So I just wanted to, again, share this information as soon as it was available to us for, for you all. It was received on May 27th as a development application with the fees attached and then the escrow agreement that we have. The amendment that we made is to also then apply that for this development agreement as we would other development agreements. So we are covered on that front. Logistically, just going back, we, we had our joint meeting on the 20th, knowing that this application would be coming, we discussed the schedule of, that we had for that. There has been some updates to that schedule that is included, I believe that's included in the packet. I tried to highlight in blue some of the dates in which that, or some of the items in which the, the dates changed or the timeline changed on it. There is a big kind of element of this that we need to happen, so we need to kind of make sure that we have the proper order of things as, as the decisions are going to be moving forward. But at this point, you know, the applications received, we're able to review, we can certainly have the conversations about what's going on. The, the critical element that we do need to get completed next is the annexation of the property from the township. So that is something that we're trying to get that established and meeting and conversations happening with the township and their representatives so that we can come to what's called an orderly annexation agreement. And that is completed through a joint resolution between the city council and the township board. So that, if all goes well and that development can be met and a resolution can be completed, the earliest that would be, you know, we reasonably believe that could be approved is at the July 15th city council meeting and I believe that's also a township board meeting night too. We seem to have our, our meetings aligning at the same time. So that is a critical element because prior to that being done and that approved, that, that resolution being approved, we can't technically make a decision on the land use of this application because it's not technically in the city limits. So we need to have that confirmed and know that that's. So we need to have that confirmed to know that that's the direction that we're going and that the, the land will be coming into the city and which comes part of our jurisdiction. I don't see any problems with that. I don't, just getting things scheduled and getting those conversations started has been, you know, it just hasn't happened yet. I know the township wanted to make sure that they completed the subdivision process. And I believe there's a conditional use permit that, of part of the parcel that was not coming into the city limits. So, and I believe Jake can chime in if that's, that has all been satisfied and completed and executed. So on that, on that end, we're, we're set to, to progress. So just offering you the opportunity. We do have, just for your information and the public's information, we do keep a plan set here. We have a couple of copies of them, so the large scale plan sets. Because otherwise, what you got and printed off is certainly going to be difficult to read at times. So they are available and we will, you know, if needed and anybody would want to look and, and inspect them, we can make them available for inspection. We do want to, you know, intend to provide that to the township as part of our discussion. You know, if we call back, we did the responsible government unit, the RGU agreement with the township for the AUAAR process. So that, again, indicates, you know, the township is well informed and aware that this is the direction that we intend with as everything moves forward. So, you know, it's just wanting to make sure that that step is completed along the way. So with that, you know, we'd also, as I said earlier, we do plan to have the work session, joint work session with the city council and planning commission next council meeting on the 17th, or work session, excuse me, on the 17th of June at 5:00 PM. There will be further opportunities for another work session. But as we progress, there will be required public hearings as this is a, with the annexation, there will be a rezone with a planned unit development overlay to that, both which require a public hearing. And then the preliminary plat for, and final plats for the, for the site. Relatively straightforward, that's why Bill's here tonight to kind of answer any questions regarding the, the plating process. They do, we are also in discussions about a development agreement. So that's putting in place terms in which we are going to, of which infrastructure and the plan for infrastructure and who's going to pay for it and when it's going to be delivered will come into play. That was a critical, you know, that, that's the next phase after we completed our studies. Do want to share with you also the information that the studies have been pretty much completed. We're in the kind of the final draft stages of them right now. We have been reviewing them back and forth with staff as well as with Tract. Very positive feedback so far. I think Bill and his team did an excellent job in terms of understanding and confirming for us what we have. So the good news on that front is that there is capacities that we do have within our systems already for, for water and, and wastewater treatment. The challenges that we face are, you know, knowing what they are, I think is, aligns really well for a project like this. Because their needs actually kind of spark us to, to, to taking the next steps that we'd need to do on, on the development of our infrastructure, particularly on the, on the water side. On the wastewater treatment side, you know, everything is pretty, pretty well positioned for that. But now we know and we know how to at least craft in the development agreement limitations on, on what can be coming from, in terms of volumes from, from the developer.
In terms of just discussion and, and questions and on page, well, page one of theirs, page 23 or something else. Am I going with the numbers on the top of the page or the bottom?
Yeah, so you're referencing the, their application, right?
Yeah, well, yeah. On the bottom it says page 23 and the top it says 1.
Yeah, the top says page 1, got it. Yep.
Okay. Looking at the map and, and reviewing with John earlier, the difference between our I industrial 1, industrial 2, doesn't seem to be a lot of differences in our zoning codes. However, I 1 is supposed to be the one that is used when it's near residential. And I was just wondering if that should be done because we do have the residential component there. I do know the rest of it sits right up against the I 2 zone, so.
Yeah, so, so we'll note that and I'll, I'll share that with the, the representatives from them and ask, you know, if they've, in their reviews, what is sparking their desire to request this for I 2 versus I 1?
I mean, it, you looked at the map and it kind of just looked like it should be I 2, but then I looked at the little hunk of residential and thought that might.
And, and then just as a, you know, information too, when we were reviewing that, we did notice there are I 1 districts that would have bought this property as well, as I 2, both.
And then, because I also asked about why a PUD as opposed to a CUP? And I thought John's answer was very helpful.
Sure. So my understanding, and I'm not the city attorney, but as I've, I've thought, I'm trying to revert,
So you don't want that job?
Repeat this as a, as a city attorney has explained it to me. Conditional use permits are based on the usage on a property that doesn't conform with your zoning. So you, you allow for that with conditions and then that stays with the, conditional uses tend to stay with the use. So as long as the use is happening on the property, the CUP still applies. If the use stops on the property for a period, a given period, an extended period, then the CUP can go away. In terms of the PUD process of the planned unit development, that's really overlaying the land itself and saying, hey, these things can happen within this land and it's, and it's, you know, not tied to specifically that use at that time. And if that use goes away, then the P, the, like the CUP. In this instance, it would, would serve well. Because what they're trying to accomplish is establishing a site that can be used for the next user. So they're doing, you know, like we do with our housing development. Hardwood Estates, I think a fair comparison in terms of how a PUD can apply. You have an area that you want to develop. It meets, and Timber Ridge, as Mark was here, that's another one that we have a PUD. You have things that it, it fits a lot of the zone, but not all of it. And there's, you know, elements that you want to be able to apply across multiple parcels. In this instance, they're trying to develop two different lots with their plat and they want to have those similar elements still in place. So, you know, there's, there's some things that they want to do that are, exceed the requirements that we have in terms of, they actually want to be more restrictive. And then there's some elements that they have that they want, you know, to exceed what our limits are. But with the nature of the development, they, they probably fit the character and justification of what we're trying to accomplish.
Chair Commissioners Jake Steen and Martin Hoffman. I think John did a really good job of summarizing the benefits or differences between the PUD and the CUP. And I would also add that, you know, this is a big site. And I think one of the important things of using the planned unit development is that you can mitigate. There's a lot of levers. You can, you don't just have a one-size-fits-all zone. Because I think the I 2 is a, you're a little setback. So for example, we're proposing variable setbacks along the major roadways with the 100. Recognizing that the residents, that you want to.
Hey Jake, sorry, can you push your button? All right, does that work?
Yeah.
Yep, press it once, there you go.
All right. Sorry about that. So, so again, we would have a variable setback. It really is designed to mitigate the unique circumstances of a site of this size and with the unique nature of this development. So there's, again, just a lot more levers and it can be very responsive to the surrounding elements. Whereas a CUP is a use that is permitted as of right in a zoning district. So there's actually a lot fewer guardrails around that. And the hope is that at, at the work session, we can get any feedback that you have, any comments, questions. And if you do have comments or questions ahead of time, please forward those to John and we'll try to respond to those as best we can at, at that work session.
We might give them to you right now.
Well, you can give them to me, I'll write them down. I'm, I'm not as smart as the rest of the team, but I'm happy to write everything down and we'll try to have the, the full team here on the 17th.
Okay, then, then go to page three on the top, 25 on the bottom. Do you have the same thing we have?
You know, it was not published, this, the full application was not published, so I, you can.
Okay, this is a.
Most of the application materials.
And accessory uses shall be permitted, principal uses, data center, and then electrical power transforming stations. Actually, in that whole thing, because it's got generators down on the next thing. Does this allow diesel backup generators?
There, so this diesel backup generators would be an element of any, any technology park, any data center. And this would, this specific language is electric power transforming station. That is referring to, to a large transmission station, right? A, a large transformer that we will be working with Great River Energy to put on site. So making sure that we have that infrastructure on site and that it's paid for by, by our end user. But there, there will be inevitably some type of generators. I don't know that diesel is, is the right fit. It's largely natural gas these days and it's also, technology is rapidly changing. And we want to be able to be flexible, to be responsive. If in 10 years it's backup batteries, we want to be able to use backup batteries.
Jump right in.
Yeah, I'm just, when you drive, I've driven around it, looking at it. Is this going to be set level, sorry, set level to the high, like Highway 52 or some of the other roads around it? Is it going to be set level or is it going to be dug in so that there's more buffer for noise maybe? I'm just checking to see if it's, you know, if you're going to go down maybe 50 feet, 60 feet under and start from there instead of right at the surface.
You know, I, I don't have the details. Ultimately, what we're looking at now is the framework of the planned unit development. And then the development will come through again to you, to the planning commission and the city council at a later date. And that's when all the details will be identified. Right now, we have some conceptual, right? We, we understand what the framework will be, what the set work, setbacks will be, what the height will be. What we are establishing now too is some of the mitigation, the sound mitigation. So there will be, yes, there will be excavation on site, but then there will also be quite a bit of burming around the perimeter. So the effect will be that it will be sunk lower down. And there's a number of different sound mitigation requirements that we are proposing to be part of this planned unit development that will be reviewed against any future development.
Okay. So just so I know, because I don't know data centers that much, is the goal to have these, is the sound mitigation, is it to force the sound up so that it's going away from, instead of straight out? Is that how that works?
I don't want to get too much into the, the technical aspects because I'm not a sound engineer. But I would say the goal is to use several different types of mitigative approaches. So we would use buffers, we would have natural landscaping in between. There would be landscaping on top of the buffers. And then there would be the placement of the technology. It's a large site, so if we do have backup generators, for example, those could be placed to the interior of the site so that any sound is mitigated by the buildings. We would of course be complying with any sound requirements under state statute as well as producing a sound study for any specific development using the technology that is being proposed at that time. So if we switch from diesel to natural gas to batteries, we would still have to provide some sort of demonstration of what that looks like.
Okay, so the goal is more or less, it's more absorption of sound?
Correct, correct. A combination of, of all of the different techniques.
Then is, there, we have one thing, it said substation overhead transmission lines are exempt from the design regulations of the I 2 district?
Correct. That is the, the large transmission lines that you see up and through the site already. We just want to be clear that those transmission lines will most likely continue to exist and we might actually have to do some reconfiguration in consultation with Great River Energy.
We, we have transit, there are lines there already that don't conform to whatever our ordinance is?
Yeah, I believe those, the cap, is it the CapEx lines that are along that? I mean, would be pretty closer within the.
Yeah, and I, I don't know. I think they, they cut through the site and certainly up to the site. And, and I don't know what the height is on those, maybe 120 feet, it's pretty substantial.
And then, I think our zoning has maximum building height of like 45 feet or something. 80 feet seems incredibly high. I know we said it can be 80 feet for communication towers. You're planning to have 80-foot tall buildings?
Yeah, the idea is that the 60 would be the minimum and the, or the, I'm sorry, the maximum. But that maximum could be increased if you increase the setback. So as you would move towards the interior of the site, for every foot you go up, you would go five feet into the interior. So for example, I think it would be a 300-foot setback if you're at 80 feet. So the idea is that you would have up to the eight-story building or up to the 80-foot building on site.
And data centers need that height?
It's about, you know, there's a lot that goes into it, but it's about efficiency and ensuring that you have the, the placement on site. And again, really, there's a lot of different factors that go into it. But, you know, mitigation of noise, mitigation of footprint. But they do, they do range from, you know, 60 to 80 feet is, is fairly standard. But to go along with that, there are a number of architectural details that we have proposed that we're looking for feedback on so that it's not just a blank 80-foot wall. So that it would be, there would be some architectural details.
I was going to say you can't because our ordinance says any wall has to have at least two things.
Right, right.
And so, and that's exactly what you're doing is.
Yep. Trying to include.
Two of the 12, or two of the 12 that are listed here.
Exactly, exactly.
What is a green wall?
So a green wall would be off, you know, sometimes a living wall is another term for it. It could be covered in vines, it could be covered in a facade treatment that allows you to actually grow plants along it.
Have you ever looked at concept of putting grass on your roofs?
I, you know, in, in my previous life, before I became a land use attorney, I was a city planner for the city of Minneapolis, so I'm very familiar with green roofs. And I think it's certainly a concept that I think would be explored.
Does that, wouldn't that also cut down on the cooling costs?
Presumably, absolutely. It, it could help. So I think it's, it's a technique that we want to make sure that we've got the flexibility to use in any end project. Again, you know, at this point, what we're looking at is just the framework. So it's important to talk about some of these to make sure that we can use those as tools when the development eventually comes through, which it will then come through to you again.
Is I? Or something else, and I can't think of it, your turn.
I was, when you're talking about lighting, is this going to be, is it, does it have to be within, like what are the city parameters for height of a light out there where we're sort of not in the city, but we, it's going to be annexed in? Is there a height? Because it's going to be, if it's too high, it's going to start, it won't matter, like the residents on the north side, if there's lights there, it's going to hit them. I mean, there's no other way around it.
Right. And what, so it's 18 feet pole and then I think it's 35 feet attached to a building. But then the expectation is that in addition to a sound study, we would have a lighting study. And the standard is typically that you cannot, they would all have to have downcast light shields so that you cannot have more than one foot candle at the property line. Now, if we've got a 200-foot setback, it's going to be most likely much, much less than that. So, but yes, we would absolutely provide a lighting study with, with any end.
So basically, what you're looking at for the lights is this style, nothing just going like this?
Right, right. Yeah, no, it's not in anybody's interest to, to be lighting up the neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah, and there, there is a city, the city ordinances do, do have performance standards when it comes to lighting. I do believe the requests within the PUD are, are satisfactory to that or below what the limits are. So do, I'm reading one, height maximum pole is 25 feet. So do, I'm reading one, height, maximum pole is 25 feet, and then, light sources can be attached to the building, but they cannot exceed the maximum height.
And all of that would be part of this P U D?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, all other ordinances still apply. They, you know, they're, the zoning and the zone in which it's located have, you know, your allowances for the things related to that zone, but additional things like lighting and others still apply. Noise, as, you know, we're talking about the, with the noise ordinance. You know, we're, we're touching on some elements that certainly are discussed and evaluated in the A U A R study as well. I know the noise being one of those elements that, that is being reviewed. The backup generation, I think, is addressed in there, too, depending on the various scenarios. So, some of that is, is there. So if there are, you know, comments related to that, that would be valid to be putting that in, since that comment period is still open.
And, and again, if you have any other questions, please feel free to forward them to John, and he'll get those to our team, and we'll make sure we can answer them on the 17th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Jake.
Moving on to C, Gorman Edition Development Concept Discussion. Mr. Gorman.
Good evening.
Good evening. So what would you like to do with your alleys? Or non-alleys, as are now.
Replat them, replat them, go back to square one. John, John and I had a discussion today. I do not need any variances. I do not need a P U D or a C U P. I'm going to conform. Might be the first time, ever.
Yeah, so, so just the overview of what we're, we're talking about. So in the, in the area, it's kind of just near City Hall here. Mr. Gorman owns a few different parcels of land. He's had some requests in the past. This is what I just wanted to, to kind of clarify for everybody. There was a resolution that approved the vacation of platted alleyways, and at the time, it was St. Clair's Tier Hot, I think, as a preliminary plat, we were looking at changing it to Gorman Edition, so there's both kind of addressed in the language. The resolution was approved, which ultimately then took effect to vacate the alleys in there. So it does, so when that happened, then the parcels kind of all got split, the alleyway became part of the other parcels in the adjacent area. So as we, we discussed, in order to put them back in, we would need to replat this, putting the alleyways back in, and then with one of the, the lots that you're looking at developing, it would need a lot split, so we could do that at the same time with that, with that preliminary plat, and then.
Because it would be a twin home.
Yeah, to, to, to serve as a twin home.
The other has a natural split where the other twin home would be.
So, so then, when that's complete, then, then the lots could be developed without any other, you know, potentially without any other exceptions or adjustments.
So it's my plan to come back here with a preliminary plat, and I'm really not in a rush to do anything at this time.
And preliminary plat being to put the alleys back.
Yeah, plating, replating.
And split that lot.
Yeah, with, and then, and then also, you know, addressing within that where the, the water and sewer service, or lines, mains would have been moved to, which actually, at this point, align better with the, where you intend the platted, or the alleys.
They are in the alley.
Yeah.
They are in the alley both ways, yes.
Okay, so when we're talking, oop.
If we're talking the alleys, now I'm looking at this off Dakota, right? Is that, is that the alley that you're looking at? I'm just looking at this plot here. So this is where you're planning on putting it in?
It's like that.
Yep, and this, is this Dakota? Right, okay. So this, so the muddy duck or whatever is going to stay there?
Yep.
Okay, and then everything is going to be.
The muddy ducks actually here, here's where, here's, that's the muddy duck right here.
Oh, okay, because I saw.
There's another house right there.
Yep.
Okay, so what's.
Or right here, wherever it is.
And I saw that, so what is this? Is this another single home you're planning on putting in? Oh, okay. I was, I saw what's going on there, okay. So then your alley, so what you're looking at for the alley is?
This, this, and this.
Okay. Just putting it just like that?
It says public alley, it's just weird to read, it says public alley right here.
Okay.
This comes, actually comes right over City Hall.
Yep, okay.
Snaps are rather hard to read sometimes.
Nope.
Okay.
It can be.
So you're clear?
Yep, I'm much clearer now than I was.
I.
Well, I'm not.
I was going to say, I, I can't, I mean, the alleys were there, we took the alleys out, the infrastructure, the water sewers there, you know, I would assume we would look favorably upon a thing to put public alleys back in.
That's what I'm going to bring to you. I don't, I don't have any request of any kind tonight. It's just informational.
Yeah, and since there was the past decisions, that's why I wanted to start the conversation, just to understand what was discussed in the past, because I, there was even the point where a preliminary plat was approved back in 2018, but then that never was moved to a final plat. So actually, the preliminary plat portion of it isn't effective, but the vacation of the alleys did take effect. So, but now, you know, with the, the change in the, in the plan, wanting to bring the alleys back and utilize those for, for access from the, from the roads is what, is the intent to the, the request.
Exactly.
So you'll be coming back?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
We just, it'll be like to bounce skin top of the hill, we don't know when.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we tentatively set a date for the July meeting?
Yes, yeah, we, yeah, no, we do not need a quorum for that. That can be, that can be set for whatever purpose, because we would just post the cancellation of the regular meeting on the 14th, too, and then move the regular meeting to whatever date. So.
So we're looking at?
Schedule wise, for us, yeah, because we have a fourth and fifth week of, with a Monday and Tuesday, you know, we can either keep it on a Monday night, the 21st or 28th. I know there was discussion, I think, the library board, but I did talk to Chris, are you on the library board as well, Diane?
The alternate.
Okay. So I did talk to Chris, and he wasn't concerned, because with the, the start times that they would.
Well, they start at 5:30.
They start earlier, so yeah, he didn't believe that they would, it would conflict, even if we moved it to that date, for that one month.
So, do you know of your calendar?
Probably the 28th won't work.
The 28th will not?
No, but the 21st should.
21st. Let's target the 21st, and I will make sure in advance that I address that with the other.
Who is our alternate? Because if, because our alternate can also come and make up the quorum.
I don't know, I'm not familiar with that, so.
It was something, I don't know if it's Ryan this year, I thought, what, Ryan was last year. I'd have to go back and find that.
Yeah, I'll look. Okay, I'll have to do this in here. Yeah.
I was going to say.
Yeah, I'll look it up, and I'll let, let us know.
I can't see it on our. You can't find it. Oh, here it is. Yeah, we had it as approval of the 2025 appointments, but I, but yeah, that would, if we can go back to doing that, that would help us, too.
All right, so the quorum is, we need to have three, at least, right? We have to have the majority, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
We talked about, and if people are missing, we can have the alternate be part of that.
Correct. Yeah, and of course, the appointments were not a downloadable packet item. Okay, so we've got the 21st, and as we are just in a general discussion meeting, I'm assuming we now can adjourn our general discussion. Meeting, discussion adjourned.
Thank you.